All right, we're gonna get rolling. It's Monday, September 18th at 7:30. And I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Stengline?
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
And Bedeau?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Johnson, second by?
Okay, me.
Stunek, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? We have an agenda. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes and the motion will be adopted by a roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Aye.
And Bevins?
Yes. That consent calendar is adopted. Item six is the council committee reports. Item six A is personal finance committee chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items, the first of which is to approve the 2024 health insurance renewal from the Better Health Collective. And the motion is to approve the renewal.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rates went up at about 9.5% and it's not enjoyable, but it is what it is. And we offer health insurance to our employees, so we are accepting it for now.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed, Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, the second motion is authorized, authorization to sign an updated Heartland Animal Rescue Team impound contract. And the motion is to approve signatures on the updated contract.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Chair, Terry? Cherry, Terry. I'm sorry.
That is a first for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
I am so sorry.
He's a bean.
Yes. Chairman Johnson, comments?
Yeah, so there was one change to the contract. It was not in the finances. It was to change the language in the contract to fit Hart's fiscal year, which runs June 1st through May 31st, as opposed to the calendar year as past contracts had been.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. Kinda laid the gauntlet down there, Chairman O'Day. Six B Safety and Public Works Committee, go.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven items here tonight. The first four were all event street closure applications, first of which is the BHS Homecoming Parade. And motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
They want to have a homecoming parade on Friday, September 29th, from 5:00 to 5:30. And it will follow the same route as the Fourth of July parade.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second, event street closure application was for the St. Francis Marathon. And motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and I so move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
This event is October 18th, 2023, 8:30 to 12:30 p.m., 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It's around St. Francis School, Juniper Street, North 9th Street, North 10th Street, and Kingwood Street. And it's about 175 students. They are expected to inform the residents.
They do a good job on this every year.
Good.
Right in the neighborhood. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number three is event alley closure application for Zion Lutheran Trunk Retreat. And motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under following conditions, that they request traffic control materials one week prior to the event, and they provide certificate of insurance to City Hall prior to the event, and I so move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any comments? Chairman O'Day?
This is on Halloween, Tuesday night, the 31st of October, from 3:30 to 6:30 behind the Zion Lutheran Church in the parking lot. They've done this one every year, too, and I think it's always been a success.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this a north-south alley or an east-west alley? Because generally, they don't block, it's the north-south one.
North-south.
Okay, so they're not gonna be blocking off Little Caesar's, because I could see a riot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
We don't want to block the hot and readies.
Oh, absolutely not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number four was event street closure application for the Spooktacular by DDBC. Coming out of committee, the motion was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached application, and I so move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
So this is an event that is on October 28th. That's a Saturday before Halloween, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Starts off with children's parade, trick-or-treating downtown, photo scavenger hunt until 4 p.m. There's just a little bit of a street closure for a food truck in front of Yashar Kombucha. And then they're asking for police staff assistance for pedestrian crossing on South 8th Street during trick-or-treating. So that is, that is all. I think this seems always gonna hit, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number five was a discussion on stop sign removal, request for North 3rd Street and Juniper Street. After discussing this item, following up on a request from a resident that lives at that intersection, we come to find out it has been a safe intersection. The complaint was about noise. But since it's been a safe intersection both before the stop signs were put in, about 2009 or 2010, until now, and before, we're not gonna take any action currently. If we do hear more from the residents in the area, we can revisit this subject, but for now, we'll just leave it as is. And there was no motion.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none, please proceed.
Thank you. Number six is a discussion on the draft for the 2024 through 2033 capital improvement plan brought forward by Public Works Director Jesse Dean. And he made some changes since we saw it last time, I believe, a couple weeks ago. And we, we didn't make a motion on this one. We're not approving anything tonight. But we did direct him to bring that forward as a final draft with any tweaks he wants to in the next two weeks. Just looking for any comment from the PNF side on anything that they saw in this capital improvement plan that they would like changed.
Any comments this evening? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, it's too expensive.
Yeah, six million bucks.
I, I want to say, it looks a lot better than it did last time. It looks like we can cash flow it now. We've got the enterprise funds with, close to within their annual budgets that we currently have with our current rate structure, and about 1.125 million a year out of the construction fund. I think that's about where we are right now. So I think this looks doable. It looks a lot better than it did before, and I look forward to just seeing the justifications for why we chose which streets we chose in the final product.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Chairman O'Day?
I'll just add, there is a chance this could totally be revamped next year if we decide to go with the street scan and if we get that data that we're requesting from BPU, I think, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak?
I, regarding the street scan, I'm still on, not quite on approval mode on that, so I don't want a $30,000 roughly, I think, was our estimated cost. So that's a lot of money in a tight budget year, so.
Thank you. Any further comments? Nope, so if we have anything that comes up, we can let Mike O'Day or Jesse Dean know, or the council, bring it before the council. But thank you to our city engineer. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Final item on SPW tonight was the direction on active code enforcement cases. There's just two properties on the list for tonight. 1424 South 8th Street is a junk and debris case. Motion is to obtain a warrant and a bait. There's some pictures that Sean can pull up if you'd like. Second was a, 15284 Beaver Dam Road was a advertising online for an unlicensed rental, short-term, long-term, whatever they could get. Staff caught on to it, and we were going to motion to crack down on it, but they have since taken that down, and we will continue to monitor. So motion was to go with staff recommendation on these two properties, and I so move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up?
End of report.
Thank you very much. You did great. Next up is seven, unfinished business. Seven A is the call for applicants. I'll handle this for the mayor. He's got a couple of things he's looking for. Charter commission, two terms to expire in 2026 and two terms to expire in 2025. Library Board has one term to expire in 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, five terms to expire in 2024. But I thought we had, we, that, that we're gonna handle through SPW from here on out. Transportation Advisory, one term to expire in 2023. And the mayor also has a term on the EDA to expire September 7th of 2026. And as council president, I have one term to expire on the parking commission in 2026. President Bevins? Yes, Mr. Chesak?
Question about charter commission?
How?
Perhaps our city attorney might know. But we're required to have one meeting a year that we report to our district judge.
Yep.
Or, I think, chief judge. And if we don't meet, is there some violation we need to be concerned about? I'm not sure if we, if we get official answer as to whether we even have a quorum of membership on that.
I'm gonna direct it to the attorney, but maybe he can come back at the next meeting and, and answer that unless, unless he can do it now. But if he memorized the charter, we need to know.
Well, I'll tell you that-
Is there something you'd like to, you could maybe help, Mr. Langel?
The statute contains no penalty clause for failure to do it. There's, there's no teeth like that in the statute.
Okay, that, that's enough for now. We definitely need people on the charter commission, and that's one I've been on for some number of years and have thoroughly enjoyed it.
Do, do we know if we have a quorum right now of members?
I'm gonna guess with four open seats, no, but we don't. So we gotta, we gotta get some folks on there and then, you know, I think we should meet if we, if we can before the end of the year, if, if.
I was considering applying.
I thought you were on it.
No.
You're the president of it. You were.
We haven't met.
Oh.
My term, my term has elapsed.
Oh, got it. All right, well, excellent. You know, I've always been kind of, part of the reason I'm trying to get out the EDA, Jeff, is because I really think a board full of council members is probably not the best interest of the city. So let's move on to seven B, looking for a resolution setting the 2024 preliminary levy for the city of Brainerd, the HRA, and motion to set date and time for the public budget, the budget public hearing. So we're gonna turn it over to Connie, see if she has anything to add, our finance director.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to the HRA director, Eric Sharpentier, first.
Perfect.
If there's any questions.
Eric, welcome. Please state your name and position with the city.
Sure, Eric Sharpentier, the executive director for the Brainerd HRA. No changes to my memo. We are still looking at levying the, the max amount of 0.0185% from the city, which equates to 190,625 for this year. There were a couple of questions that council member Chesak had asked today, so I wanted to just address those in front of the council as well, if you didn't see some of those answers. One of the questions was, do we levy through the Brainerd HRA for Crow Wing County HRA? Because we do have a management and service agreement with Crow Wing County HRA. The answer is yes. That amount is 185,160 for 2024. That's what we have requested from the county for our management fee, which would include our administrative fees in there. Another question that was asked was, do we levy for Crosby through the city of Crosby's levy? Answer to that is no. We do not have a levy through Crosby. Our management fee comes out of the, the two properties that we manage for them. It does not get levied from the, the members of the community. Third question from council member Chesak is, are the levies from Brainerd and Crow Wing County, if we're levying those dollars, are they separate or are our residents from the city of Brainerd being taxed twice? Answer is no, from per Debbie Erickson. And from my understanding is, the HRA levies for the city are separate from what the county is, and the county does not get to then pull any levy dollars from the city of Brainerd if we are levying through there, much the same as, as the case with our Brainerd levy. So council member Chesak, hopefully I've answered all of your questions, and I'm available for any other questions of the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sharpentier?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
The amount you asked the county for, what is that based on? We have that percentage that you mentioned from, based on our-
The 0.0185.
Yep.
Yeah, so we have that same budget levy authority from the county. That would equate to roughly 2.8 million dollars. We do not, for our operations on the county side, have any reason to levy in that amount. We don't have any properties that we own and manage versus what we do through the city of Brainerd side of things. And, and, and so it would not, from our estimation, be, be in our purview to try to levy at our max capacity for Crow Wing County.
And then, may I? Yeah, you may. Mr. Chesak?
And I know this is not related to the levy for the city, but the housing trust fund, that's levied against the entire tax base of Crow Wing County, including the city of Brainerd residents, correct?
I don't believe so, because again, that's part of the Crow Wing County HRA levy capacity, much the same that the Brainerd HRA levy is separate. So that is all within the same levy for Crow Wing County. And so my understanding is that those dollars, all encompassing, so our, our request this year was higher for the Crow Wing County HRA trust fund, but that is through our levy capacity. But my understanding is that would still just be those Crow Wing County residents, but for Brainerd, Crosby, and Pequot Lakes.
Okay, I'll get clarification on that, so, thank you.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments? I'll start with Chairman Johnson and then go to Kara Terry.
Yeah, mine's more of a comment than a question. The Serene Pines Delmar Estates, Brainerd Oaks, is not managed by the Brainerd HRA. That is a Crow Wing County HRA program. So if you're proposing to tax the citizens of Brainerd to manage that county program, it would mean, yes, we are taxing Brainerd citizens for county programming.
I think because of the dual role with the county and-
No, it's not.
Yep.
It is a county program, not a Brainerd HRA program, correct?
Correct.
Because anytime you're asked what you do in the city of Brainerd, you point to that county program that is located in the city of Brainerd, which is in the county. But you don't point to any programs that the Brainerd HRA is doing in the city of Brainerd. So that, that's a bit of a concern. And I've been bringing it up for a year, two years now, at the county, or at the Brainerd HRA meetings, that we should be doing something in Brainerd. Hopefully, we do next year. If not, maybe the year after. But Brainerd HRA does need to refocus its, its work in the city of Brainerd and not just focus on, on county work, which I, I think we've kind of lost our way over at the HRA with that the last couple of years. But that's my comment, not really a quote.
Excellent, thank you. Kara?
I think the only other difference is the dollars that you're getting from the state in relation to housing. I don't remember that amount, but that would be taxed through all of Crow Wing County, including Brainerd, since it's coming from the state, right?
So the state-
The housing dollars, the 170 some-
157,000 for the county, which has been proposed to be sent over to the Crow Wing County Housing Trust Fund.
Yep.
If that does occur, if the board takes that action, then that would be a case where, where that is-
That's taxed throughout the entire state. So that's just one other exception to-
But I, I believe the ongoing funding for that is actually the 0.25% Twin Cities metro tax that is being included for, for outstate as well as metro areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
President Bev? Yeah, Mr. Chesak, back to Jeff, and then we'll go everyone else for our second round.
I'd just like to make sure I understand what Mr. Johnson was talking about, because if we're listing Serene Pines, Delmar, Brainerd Oaks as a project the HRA is working on, and is that, is that related to the tax dollars you're asking for, for operations from the city of Brainerd taxpayers, when it's a county-run HRA program?
Sure, so we do mention that in the letter that I've proposed to the city. We also work on tax-forfeited property policy in the city of Brainerd proper, and we are submitting the tax increment financing redevelopment project for downtown Brainerd. So all of these projects are things that we are trying to do within the city limits with those levy tax dollars.
Okay, I'm, I'm still not getting my answer. Are the HRA levy for operations that you're asking for, is that paying for operations regarding Serene Pines, Delmar Estates, and Brainerd Oaks, which is a county-run program? For county HRA-run program? That's where you make all the decisions for your, at the county level for HRA, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, so are, are you levying dollars through the county taxpayers to service those housing projects?
We are.
You're not?
We, we are.
We are.
In that, in our Crow Wing County levy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for round two? Thank you very much, Eric. Back to Connie, anything you'd like to add on before we look for a motion on the preliminary levy?
Thank you, council president, members of the council. At the September 13th workshop, staff presented a 10.81 to 12.67% increase to the 2023 levy to achieve a balanced budget for 2024. Staff also discussed the approximate 642,000 of one-time public safety aid at the workshop and its eligible uses. If the council elected to use 50% of this funding for the 2024 police expenditures, the preliminary levy would be in the 7% to 8% increase range. There may be funds available to transfer from the capital fund to the general fund, as councilman, council member Johnson stated at the workshop. However, the amount is not known at this time, since the numbers in the capital plan for the years 2025 and beyond have not been updated for the park board master planning that was recently completed. As directed at the worksheet, at the workshop, the proposed resolution is blank as far as the city's preliminary levy amount. Page 164 of the packet included various levy percentages increase and what the 2024 levy amount would be if the proposed dollar increase, and the proposed dollar increase as well. So there are many unknowns right now with the budget. At the workshop, and as mentioned in the packet, staff's recommendation would be to set the preliminary levy at 12%.
Any questions of staff? Okay, then we're looking for a motion as to the dollar amount of the 2024 levy. Chairman Johnson?
All right, I move we adopt the resolution setting the preliminary levy in the city of Brainerd at 7,121,720 dollars and 173,960 for the Brainerd HRA, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Can we repeat that amount again? Thank you.
If I can get a second, I can explain it.
Second.
We have a second by Terry. So motion by Johnson, second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
Okay, so staff recommended the 12%. That's about where we are right now. I think we can get down to 6%, but I'm going with the 12%, less than 95,000 from the SRO contract. And that's just planning that we will use 95,000 of that public safety money to offset it for budgetary purposes next year. So it's 12% less than 95,000, so it comes in around 10.3, but I'm still confident we can get closer to 6% when we get to December. And then for the HRA, it's less than they ask for, but if you look at their general fund budget, it just reduced their ask by their net profit for the year. So it gives them an exactly balanced budget. They won't have to make any decisions to change anything. Their budget is still balanced, but they're not getting everything they asked for.
Thank you. Any further comments? Bevins? I'll go with Mr. O'Day first, and then you, Mr. Chesak.
Thank you. I will reluctantly vote yes on this, knowing that we have the tools to get down to like what you said, 6% or less if we wanted to. I won't vote yes again on anything above 6%.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak.
Could you please, Gabe, give me the difference between what staff is requesting for our levy increase dollar-wise and then the change, just a dollar change?
95,000.
Okay, and then, okay, yep, okay, and then the HRA, what's the difference there in dollars?
17,000, 16,600-ish.
Thank you. That's all I need.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Any other comments? Kara Terry?
I would agree with council member O'Day and hope that it could be less than 6%. However, I know that we have a lot of work to do with the BPU staff and the city staff in coming to some resolution in terms of salary and, and all of that. So I understand this might be an outlying budget year because of that. If not for that, we could have been potentially lower. So I, I agree on the 6% or less.
Thank you. We'll all get a chance come December.
I agree with you.
Anything else? Here are the comments. It's a resolution. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline, sorry, Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Thank you for our finance department and Chairman Johnson. Eight, new business. Eight A is looking for a res, what's that?
We need to set the date and time for the-
Oh, my goodness.
And just a reminder that that can be done during a regular city council meeting. The city has historically held a special meeting the second Monday in December. It always has been at 6 o'clock, however, last year was at 7:30. So just to give you a little information.
Okay, do you think we need a special meeting? Or do you want to try and do it? Or do you want to try and do it? You said we do it at the first meeting in December usually?
Usually we do a special meeting in the second Monday in December.
A special meeting, second Monday.
For sending out 10 and 1/2% notices, we should probably have its own meeting.
Okay, do you like that? Stick with that second Monday? Everybody? We do 6:00?
What's that date again? The second?
I apologize, I don't have the date.
December 11th.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to set the time and date as December 11th at 6:00 in council chambers?
So moved.
Second by Stunick, second by Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That is set. All right, we don't have any budget workshops scheduled between now and then. I don't know that we, what's that?
Yet.
Yet, well.
I think we'll handle it at PNF. We'll handle it at regular council meetings from here until December.
I like that. Next up is item eight, new business. Eight A is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bond series 2023A in the appro, in the proposed amount of $5,435,000. And this is Finance Director Hillman.
Yes, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Chris Hogan from Baker Tilly. She should be online with us, and she can provide additional information on the bond issue.
Welcome, Chris Hogan, are you there?
Can you hear me okay?
Now we're, now we got you.
Okay.
Take us through this.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. And Connie, thanks for the introduction. Yep, I'm here tonight to present information relative to the city's issuance of bonds and the adoption of the resolution. The city is going to issue bonds in the amount of $5,435,000, general obligation bond series 2023A on October 16th. The bonds are broken down as two purposes. The one purpose of 2,320 improvement bonds is the city's share of the 2023 North Brainerd construction project. That portion of the bonds is going to be paid with tax levies and special assessments, and it will be repaid over a term of 10 years. The other portion of the bonds, the 3,115,000 utility revenue bonds, is the BPU share. This portion of the bonds is broken down even further, 1,160,000 for water improvements related to the 2023 North Brainerd construction project, and an additional 1,955 for the sewer river crossing project. Together, these two utility projects are repaid over a term of 15 years and are repaid with water and sewer utility funds. Just a note, a part of a bond sale, the city will go through a rating application with standard and pores, and that's scheduled for next Monday. The city's current general obligation debt is rated double A minus. And our current projections for an interest rate for a 15-year term bond at this time, given the current interest rate environment, is a 3.8%. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. President? Are there any questions for Ms. Hogan from our bond council? Mr. Chesak?
I just want clarification, that last number for the water and sewer, you said 1,955, you didn't say 955,000 or $955?
1,955,000, thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the bond council? All right, thank you very much, appreciate you being online with us. So we're looking for a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, series 2023A, in the proposed aggregate principal amount of 5,435,000. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, any questions, discussions, or comments? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Thank you again. Next up is item eight, new business. Eight B is adopting a resolution declaring costs to be assessed and calling for a public hearing on the 22, 2022 to 2023 nuisances in downtown special services district. Mr. Dean, you're, this is one you, is this one you and I talked about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you, can you clarify to the council what we talked about?
Yes, sir, so you have the numbers in the agenda packet and the resolution and hearing. We don't have any changes in regard to the downtown special services district, but at this time, we're requesting that the council orders the preparation of the assessment rolls and sets the public hearing at the October 16th meeting. We are also recommending that to adopt the attached resolution with one correction to the total amount for the nuisances, and James can expand on the reason for that change.
Yes, thank you, Jesse. So I'll just add to that, I did include at your locations there, a changed resolution. Staff is recommending to go from 37,775 to 40,500. That change is related to, there's a $25 late fee that's applied to each citation, and that was missed in the first one.
Thank you. Any questions of staff regarding the assessment on the downtown special services and the nuisances? Yeah, Mr., I will go with Mr. O'Day first, and then Mr. Johnson.
Just looking for the difference between 2020, the previous winter's special assessments or the previous year's special assessments, how much did it go up?
I believe it actually went down. So the total amount of, I'm just thinking, snow removal was just over 100,000, I think it was 101,000 and change. So it did go down this year. Again, it's really how the snow actually falls, so the less, over four inches, the less we get billed. So overall, I'd say we've probably lessened it just a little over $10,000 over the previous year.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chair? Okay, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a tip of my cap to Councilman O'Day, he asked my question.
All right, any further questions of staff? Hearing none, this is a resolution, we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution declaring the costs to be assessed and calling for a public hearing on the 2022, 2023 nuisances in downtown special services district. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2023, at the regular council meeting at 7:30. Is there a motion to adopt that with the corrected nuisance violation dollars?
So moved, Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by O'Day. Any further discussions on the motion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is adopting a resolution declaring costs to be assessed. What is this on, Jesse?
This is for the North Brainerd project, sir.
The North Brainerd project, improvement 2112. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
I'd just like to expand, the project's mainly complete with the remaining turf establishment yet to be accomplished. As we do have a bid price for this item, staff felt comfortable using that cost to determine a final assessment amount for the project. Those amounts are included in the agenda item. As a reminder, this process does not close the contract with DeChantelle, and they will be required to complete any remaining punchless items and final seating. So at this time, staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution, order the preparation of the assessment rolls, and calling for the public hearing at the October 16th meeting.
Any questions of staff? Yep, Mr. O'Day?
Is there a delay on the establishment of temporary grass still? Has it, has it been done yet?
It was done.
Today.
Yeah, today.
Oh, it was done today?
They just placed it down today.
Okay.
It looks great, because it's got all that green stuff that's in the weeds.
Yeah, the green stuff, but it, it looks a little bit like green tar.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution declaring the costs to be assessed, order the preparation of the proposed assessment, and set a public hearing for the proposed assessment at October 16th, 2023, at 7:30 PM at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second? By Chesak? Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is item 8D, a resolution declaring costs to be assessed and call for a public hearing for improvement 21-10, which is the Greenwood Street reconstruction. Again, Mr. Dean, is there anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, sir, thank, thank you, Mr. President. So the Greenwood Street project was completed late in 2022, so we were unable to complete this process before the end of 2022 to get put on the rolls for 2023. This project was also proposed to be assessed a little bit differently than our policy. As there are only two large vacant lots adjacent to Greenwood with no direct access to Greenwood, the previous staff had gathered some benefit data from our appraiser to determine an appropriate assessment amount or method. The recommendation was to assess based on a per square foot of buildable area rather than a foot, front foot length, as our current policy has. So staff, current staff also verified this spring with the appraiser that those assumptions that were in spring 2022 were valid still currently. So staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution with some corrections. As the project was constructed in 2022, we recommend assessing at the rate used for projects last year, which was actually 4.91, not the 5.15 that's in the version in the packet, so your revised version is on the dais there, which would be similar to the projects, the 5.15 is similar to projects that there was this year. Also, there was a typo in the resolution that shows one-year assessment period, which should be a 10-year assessment period. The hearing notice is correct, but the revised resolution reflects the 10-year period. Staff also recommends council ordering the preparation of the rolls and calling for the public hearing at the October 16th meeting.
Perfect, and this on our desk is the corrected?
That is correct, sir.
All right, so you've got the corrected version. Any questions of staff on the Greenwood assessment? All right, hearing none, we're looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution, which declares the costs to be assessed, orders the preparation of the proposed assessment, and sets the public hearing on the proposed assessment on October 16th, 2023, at 7:30 PM at our regular council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Stunick, second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up, item eight, new business. Eight E is the first reading of proposed ordinance 1558, Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals. Mr. Kravik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So at the September 5th city council meeting, council directed staff to draft an ordinance to make Safety and Public Works Committee, the Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, and bring the ordinance as a first reading to the next city council meeting. Again, the Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals is advisory to city council. City council would have the final determination whether to revoke or deny rental license. So with that, staff recommends motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1558, and ordinance amending section 425.3014 of the city code, and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Kravik. Any questions of staff regarding this? Mr. Chesak?
I just was wondering if Mr. Kravik can promise us that all future ordinances will be just this short?
Very short one.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1558, an ordinance amending section 425.3014 of the city code, and dispense with the actual reading, which must be unanimous.
So moved.
Motion by Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Item nine is a public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, and we like to keep it to three to five minutes. I don't know if there's anybody online, but if you're in the audience and would like to come forward and give us your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind, as long as it's not something that's on the agenda this evening. Come on up.
Well, it is on the agenda, but...
Okay, then we can't have you speak about it. I apologize, the time to speak would have been during the hearing part of that.
Oh, did we miss it? Because we wanted to talk about the landlord, the landlord board.
Okay.
Our, so do we do this at a different time?
You come in tomorrow and talk to this young lady.
Okay, because yes, I was sent by the landlord, our group, the Brainerd landlord group.
I think that public hearing's at the next meeting.
Yeah, there will be a public hearing at the next meeting on that.
All right.
So you could do it then, but we don't have one public hearing on each ordinance.
Okay.
So, and that's scheduled for two weeks.
Fabulous.
Mr. Bevins?
Yes.
We won't answer questions, though, at a public hearing.
Right, so the public hearing is you, just to, so to clarify, it's your time to tell us what you think. If you've got questions, or, then you can come on in, or you can, all of our phone numbers are on the city of Brainerd website, so.
All right.
Okay.
I was just sent the behalf of the landlord group, and you tell me when I'm supposed to come back.
I'm so glad you're here, thank you. You got it. Yep, so it'll be on the agenda next time, but there'll be a public hearing.
All right.
Okay? You got it. Anybody else in the audience wish to talk to us, tell us their thoughts about something that we did not discuss this evening? Come on up, state your name and address, because we're on television, and you look good, by the way.
Thank you. My name is Jose Maltoz.
Yes.
I am the new tenant over at 8194 Fairview. I know it's a Baxter address, but I wanted to come introduce myself. I'm the co-owner of a new company that's coming into town, and I just wanted to kind of drop a line to you guys, because cannabis is a huge part of my life. That's why I moved back home to Minnesota. There's a few aspects to it other than just making money. The biggest thing I kind of really liked, I love your guys' energy, by the way, and just how you guys all just mesh together. Thank you, guys, for having me. Provide high-quality, cost-effective public services and leadership. I love all three of that. Quality's huge to me. You know, it's not just the quality of my work, the quality of others, the quality of products, because some of these things are more than just medicine, you know, is a life, lifestyle to other people. And I'm a small business owner, and I grew up with a single mother, you know, three, three older sisters, and that's just like how we just kind of raised each other as a family. You know, so like I'm a firm believer in supporting other businesses, holding each other accountable. I've been doing cannabis for 10 years out in Michigan. This is my third legal state now that I've moved to for cannabis. I absolutely love it, it's my life. I honestly am a firm believer, I was put on this planet for this plant. So I'm really looking forward to being a part of the community, being part of the town. I know it's a Baxter address, but I still plan on being actively within the community, trying to be helpful for you guys. I did see you guys posted a no public smoking ban in the parks, you know, which I agree. You know, I have a little brother myself, and that's the last thing I'd want, but I just want to kind of drop a line, introduce myself, and if there's any questions or, I'm a firm believer on education, compliance, things like that, that's really what makes my life everything. I held a compliance manager year for a year and a half with a company. I've worked with seven other companies as well, from the licensing, the operations, day-to-day logistics, inventory, to just a lot of big roles. So I just wanted to kind of introduce myself, looking forward to being in the town, I really like the area, and thank you, guys, for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, yes.
Anybody else in the audience have anything they want to add, or online? I don't see anybody online. We will then close the public hearing at 8:14, and we will move on to staff reports. I've been waiting to do this, Eric, because I, I miss you all the time online. Why don't you, anything you'd like to add, or to start, start us off with for staff reports?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have one, just one item. September 1st, we learned that we were successful in our application for another small cities grant in southeast Brainerd, so that means we'll get eight units of owner-occupied rehab, 12 units of single-family rehab that we'll get to do. We were funded at the maximum amount that we requested, so that was great, and looking forward to doing that grant with the city.
Thank you very much. HR Director Schubert? City Attorney Langill?
Mr. President, council, at the last meeting, there was a question asked about whether the AG's office, Attorney General's office, could look into the Lake City Media Collaborative. There is a statute that allows them, that office, to undertake investigations for unlawful practices under the Nonprofit Corporation Act. They need to have a reasonable ground to believe that somebody's violated the law. Given the background on this case, I think the first thing they're going to ask for is the contract, and what was done wrong under that contract, and the history of that contract with the city. As you know, we don't have the contract, so it's going to be a little difficult to, as I understand their process here, a little difficult to proceed with that kind of investigation. I suspect that it's not going to go anywhere if we attempt it, but I just wanted to report back that that is the scenario, that you can do it, but I think we're going to need some more information to, in order to pursue it.
I have a question on this issue, Mr. Langill, if I may. Is there any potential personal liability by any of the board members on this issue? Because to me, that would certainly be something that I think, we have a number of board members in the community that are members in good standing, and I don't think they would want to be a part of a lawsuit wherever it may go.
Well, with any corporation, nonprofit or otherwise, if there is a violation of law, I mean, obviously, the Nonprofit Corporation Act contains certain restrictions with respect to what you can and cannot do, but it still goes back to demonstrating that something was not done properly, right? It still goes back to be able to prove, and, and they obviously dispute any breach of contract, so it, everything keeps coming back to that contractual relationship and the history of that relationship, and what evidence there is, as opposed to what people feel is what happened, so.
Understood. My recommendation would be to put this on PNF, because I think the contractual violation comes between the organization and the state of Minnesota and the 501(c)(3), not between us and them, and I, I would like to see it on PNF. Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I think we should pursue it, I'd like to see it on PNF, too, because I don't think it's contractual obligation violation with the city of Brainerd. They were organized as its 501(c)(3) nonprofit to provide a public access channel and education. They told us they have $700,000 in the bank, they aren't operating a public access channel. I'm not sure what they are doing in the realm of education, but it seems like if they're spending money on anything, it's being misappropriated towards their charter, which is their contract which is their contract with the public and the government, not their, not their contract with the city of Brainerd that we apparently didn't have and were illegally shoveling money at them for decades.
Illegally giving them money.
That's our bad, but that doesn't, two wrongs don't make a right. So I, I think we should pursue this, and I'd like to see this on personnel and finance as well.
And we certainly have some history of how much we received on the charter fees and how much we wrote checks to the Lake City Media Collaborative. Caretary?
Oh, I didn't have anything, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Thank you, Mr. Langill. Anything else from the attorney's office?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Krampic, Community Development Director?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. At the next Planning Commission meeting, which will be held this next Wednesday here at six PM, there'll be a public hearing for the proposed off-street parking ordinance. The Planning Commission will also be reviewing a draft ordinance regarding short-term rentals. And then also this next Saturday here, there'll be two fun events downtown. Just wanted to remind the public. Laurel Street Parking Lot will be the Flapjack Festival, or I believe it's ten dollars, all you can eat flapjacks and sausage and pancake eating contest, relay races. And then Laurel Street, starting at ten o'clock, will be Touch a Truck, where kids can get in trucks and honk horns and, and have a lot of fun. That's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. City Engineer and Public Works Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few updates here. So staff did present to the Minnesota House Capital Investment Committee last week on the city's three bonding bill request for twenty twenty-four. I thought the presentation's actually generally well-received, and we even heard some positive comments as well afterwards, so I thought that was very positive. Southwest Forest Street, the washout there, we've gotten pretty lucky. The temporary fix is held together pretty well, a little bit of washing of sand still, but we just ordered the pipe. It should be a couple of weeks out for the pipe, so while we're waiting for that to get manufactured, we're going to start working on scoping with contractors and getting a pricing from them, hopefully having somebody onboard to kick it off as soon as we can get that pipe delivered. Also, on Monday, this upcoming Monday, city and SEH staff will be holding a stakeholder input session on the Sixth and Willow Roundabout Project. We invited several businesses in the industrial park area that have a lot of trucking. We also invited Speedway and the Hannican Insurance. So we're collecting information from those stakeholders on the project early in the process to ensure we consider everybody's needs at the intersection. One item that did come up was the Phase One environmental assessment. We were hopeful that we were going to be able to use the previous Phase One from the reconstruction project. We were already planning on completing a Phase Two based on the findings of that previous Phase One. MINDOT has since clarified that we would need a new Phase One assessment for that project. The completion of the Phase One would be just under nine thousand dollars. That's not in the scope of the previous work. Staff has requested that SEH prepare a formal amendment request reflecting the change of scope of work. That'll be something that we'll bring to the council for review at a, potentially the next meeting. And then finally, tomorrow, Soil and Water is hosting a site tour for the Buffalo Hills Gully Project with our county and state representatives also invited. The meeting starts at twelve thirty at the Land Services Building with the tour starting at the Buffalo Hills Lane and Carroll Lane intersection at twelve fifty. So I have.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman. Nothing to add? And ITGIS Director Strong?
Nothing.
Anything for the Police Department this evening?
Nothing to add.
All right, and City Minister Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a reminder on what we did present on, on the thirteenth was the water treatment facility and also the pedestrian bridge across two ten, as well as the Keanu, Keanu Lake State Trail Extension. I thought the presentations were outstanding. Bolton and Mank played a video, which I will share with the city council on the water treatment facility and the needs. Speaking of which, when we had our joint meeting with BPU, we had discussed the possibility of touring the BPU facilities. We've scheduled two dates for that. Thursday, September twenty-eighth, from four to six PM, and then Friday, September twenty-ninth, from ten until noon. Tony will be sending out an email tomorrow to see which one, if either you are interested in, if you're able to attend, and that way we'll know if we have to post for a quorum on either the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth.
Thank you very much. Next up is the mayor's report, who is unavailable this evening. Council member reports. I'll start us off. I just want to say how grateful I am to the Parks Department, and I mean all the workers that work for our Parks Department. There's virtually been, every weekend in Gregory Park's had something going on. And it's really exciting to see people using our park, and it's really exciting to see the good job that our Parks workers do, keeping it up to date. Everybody makes a mess, and they come in and fix it and make it pretty for the next weekend. And it's, there's people there every day, but it's been really busy over the weekends. So good job to the Parks Department. Mr. O'Day, you want to be next?
Sure. I just want to add that if we want services rendered by anybody, we should have a contract in the future. That's just an opinion.
Yeah, it seems like a good one. Mr. Chesak?
Yes, at our last meeting, I mentioned a person that I, lives in my apartment building that was waiting for the bus, and I did not know this, but she was traveling to the Heart Animal Rescue to pet the animals, but she is also in a wheelchair, so that was one of the reasons she was also using the bus. I noted she had an aide with her, and that's the difficulty when you are helping somebody and you can't transport them in your own vehicle. So I just wanted to clarify that. I heard from a couple of people that heard me say that, and they wanted to make sure I was aware of that, so just wanted to clean that up.
Excellent. Mr. Johnson?
The EDA Commission met and was presented with some options for branding, tagline, logo for, for the website we're building. And they were, they were good. They were good. We picked one that we're going to modify a little bit that really fits, fits what I think the Brainerd theme. And I think we're going to have a website probably within two months, so keep on, keep on the lookout for that.
Welcome to nineteen eighty. Thank you. Caretary?
My only update is to invite everyone to our recovery walk at Kalanis Park Thurs- this Thursday, the twenty-first, from four to seven. We'll have pizza and games and the actual walk around the park. It's going to be a good time.
Chief Stunick.
I have nothing tonight.
How about a motion to adjourn? Do you have one of those?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by O'Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are.